Flood allegiance to the fire line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, your presentation. Not your presentation, Andrew.
I'm sorry, but I have Sean's now.
What were you going to give me there?
I think we have a training session again.
No. We won't be done. All right, we've got a certificate of commendation for the wastewater treatment facility operational award. It's been presented by the MPCA to the city of Sturville for our Sturville wastewater treatment plant and all its staff in recognition of exceptional compliance with Minnesota pollution control agency wastewater permit during the 2020 review period. The dedication that Sturville shows to protecting Minnesota's waters are duly recognized and appreciated by the state of Minnesota. Laura Bishop signed it, she's the MPCA commissioner. Sean, are you going to accept this? Highly trained staff did an excellent job again this year.
Do you want one too?
No.
Sure you have one?
Sean just made it. All right, thank you. Sean, thank you guys. You know, guys thanks a lot. Great work, good job. Our guys know their stuff and we're training new guys all the time. All right. We're looking glass and not getting nothing. Roll call. Roll call, smaller roll call. Target on my right.
Counselperson Josh Hart.
Counselperson Brett Feier.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda? Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. They'll take us on to approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of April 27th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. They'll take us on to financing budget. We have accounts payable and the additional listing there. If you have any questions, you can ask finance director Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, the accounts payable, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. They'll take us on to motions and general business. And first items under motion and general business tonight is a presentation by Smith Shafer and Associates. Andrew's here to tell us what a wonderful job the finance committee and our finance director and our council did with the budget.
All right, thanks for having me tonight. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Andrew Felletti with Smith Shafer and we're contracted to perform the audit for the city of Sturville for the year ended December 31st, 2020. Tonight we will walk through the PowerPoint. We'll not walk through the actual audited financial statement. There is a nice lovely cover of the new amphitheater down there, so Carla did a good job with the picture on that. So every number that we'll talk about tonight does come directly out of that audit and goes into this PowerPoint, so we'll walk through it in detail tonight. So, second slide there, there is our audit. So we provide an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statement, which is the highest level of assurance that the city can provide on receiving the financial statement. We are independent from the city. Our opinion is a reasonable, not absolute assurance that is free from material misstatement as we take a risk-based approach and make selections off the perceived risk. With that said, every selection that we made, we did get full supporting documentation from the city, so the city's records were well-kept and everything that we needed to get our opinion was provided to us. Also in that audited financial statement is the Minnesota legal compliance, so we do tests to make sure any conflict of interest, any public indebtedness, claims of disbursement, there's seven different areas. We did not have any exceptions on any of our testing related to that. As I mentioned, we did sit down with the finance committee on April 27th and reviewed the financial statements in full. We reviewed the internal control-related matters. We have the same finding that we've had for many years, just the segregation of duties. Just, it's very common in cities, you cannot properly adequately segregate duties just with the amount of people that you have in your staff. So it's just making the council aware that you guys are a part of the controls in reviewing those expenditures as they do go out. Our auditor responsibility letter says there is some use of some estimates in the financial statements such as depreciation, net pension liability. We didn't have any disagreements with management and then we requested a management representation letter that said they provided all information to us. And then we also have to respond, since the city of Sturville is going to go for the comprehensive annual financial report with the GFOA, we have to respond to some findings. So there was two findings that we had to respond to related to the 2019 financial statement. So we responded to those findings. The two commons were, one was related to no disclosure, just clarifying on how we were calculating an expense amount. And then there was one terminology change, it went from fixed assets to capital assets, so another big change there. But we corrected those for the 2020 financial statement that we will plan on submitting for the GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting again, as the city has received that the last 13 years. So you have a very good record with the GFOA and with general accounting principles there. One other comment there, there's no single audit required. You did not expend more than $750,000 in federal awards. I used to expend about $470,000 in the current year, which was related to the CARES Act and those funds that came in. Next, we'll just briefly look at the different governmental funds that we have there. So there's the general fund, which is the most used fund of the city, provides for most of the day-to-day activity of running the administration, public safety and public works. Most of those expenditures are coming out of the general fund. There are six funds that are classified as special revenue funds, the library revolving loan fund, retail revolving loan fund, civic center, volunteer fire and first responders and economic development, three different types of debt service funds, and then capital project funds. There's two different types that we report on, but the city capital project funds made up of 29 individual funds that are combined into one column on the financial statement. Next, we look at your tax capacity. So on slide four in the yellow there, total tax capacity duty is $4,809,000, up about $200,000 from the prior year, and up about 1.4 million in the last eight years. So the last five years, you can see that pretty consistent growth trend there. So this just makes, illustrates how the city is growing in tax capacity. The values of the property are increasing as long as with the ability to generate revenue within the city. Next, we'll look at property taxes collected. So these are a month's collected, not necessarily the levy. So total property taxes collected was $3,545,000. This represents about 55% of the total governmental revenues. So when I say governmental revenues, it's going to be everything excluding the utility revenues that are collected. So that was up about $175,000 from the prior year, or 5%. We did increase the levy to a little over 3.4 million this year, so with the mobile home taxes that are collected, we did collect a little bit more than we levied in 2020. Just one other brief comment on here is if you exclude the $470,000 of the CARES Act, you actually funded about 60% through taxpayers and the property tax levy. So that is a very high percentage for the city to rely on the taxpayers for operations of the city. The next slide there is the tax increments. So there's one active TIF district brings in about $35,000 related to the icon. The next slide is related to local government aid, slide eight. So this is the first year we received a little over $1 million in LGA or local government aid from the state of Minnesota, $1,024,000. This represents about 16% of the total governmental revenues. It was an increase of almost $72,000 from the prior year, so it's the first year in two years that we did receive about, we've received a little increase in 2018 as well as it was flat the prior four years. We'll get about $32,000 more in 2021 as the total LGA rises or increases to about $1,056,000. Just a different way of looking at the governmental fund revenues, different areas that we talked about. So property taxes is obviously the largest area of revenues for the city. As I mentioned, it's about 60% of the total revenue coming in. We did see that increase in LGA on the far right column, that went up about $72,000. Tax increment in investment income are little portions, and then we did see a little decrease in the charges for services this year. That was down about $86,000, about $57,000 related to the swimming pool, $10,000 related to different concession, other park and rec programs, and about $9,000 in the charges for services in the civic center. So still brought in about $258,000, but down from the prior year. Next, we'll get into the expenditures on slide 10. So the green on the bottom is going to be the general operating expenditures that we've had. So that increased about $130,000 in 2020. So general government, I talk about is the administration, professional services, supplies, telephone, insurance, travel and printing costs. So total about 22% of the total governmental expenditures when you exclude major capital outlay and debt service. So the increase that I mentioned in the green there was about $130,000. Most of that was really related to wages and health insurance increases, and then also the legal with some tree removal issues as well. And then I created a new category this year in 2020, the red on top is any capital outlay. So that was some CARES funding that was spent for upgrading the bathrooms, the touchless, and also some software uses. That was the increase, total of about $197,000 from the prior year. Next is public safety. So spent about $957,000 in public safety, that's law enforcement, fire protection, street lighting and transit. Transit prior to 2014, we present numbers prior to that, so we continue to add transit into that. Our green on the bottom is again, once again, is the kind of operation cost, so they're pretty flat, they're only up to about $12,000 related to our general operating, and there's a small amount of capital, and the yellow on top for some radio and concrete. The next slide just breaks down the public safety expenditures a little bit further, with the first grouping being the law enforcement contract, fire protection in the second grouping, then the street lighting on the far right. So law enforcement contract was the same in 2020 as in 2019, about $550,000 spent on the law enforcement contract. Second grouping there is where the increases in the expenditures came, related to the fire protection, first responders. So that was up about $16,000 in total expenditures, mostly related to some clothing that was purchased and additional supplies dealing with the pandemic that was going on that was needed. The fire protection costs were funded by about $105,000 of property tax, township contracts about $89,000, and $63,000 of the state fire aid related to the pension, and then the street lighting was also up about $9,000, just getting those, allocating the costs correctly as we continue to move forward with that. Public works on slide 13. So spent about $485,000 in 2020, up about $73,000 from the prior year, represents about 14% of the total governmental expenditures. Most of this increase was in the street maintenance, and then also there was a little change in the salary allocation, just as we're getting the different finance directors just making sure everything makes sense to them. So it was a little change in how the allocation of some of the salaries that were occurring. So we did see a little increase in the public works in 2020. Library expenditures on slide 14. So this is the salaries and benefits, SALCO contract books, supplies and utilities. So total expenditures about $318,000 in 2020, down about $11,000 from the prior year, total about 9% of the total governmental expenditures. The main sources of revenue that are coming in from the library are property taxes, about $291,000, and then the county of about $72,000. So the green on the bottom is our operating expenditures, they were down about $30,000, $25,000 related to salaries. And then the blue on top, some capital is up a little bit this year as we did some touchless book returns and a laptop, and then there's also more books and supplies purchased related to the different programs that were running that we capitalized. The next slide here on slide 15 is the recreation. So civic center, swimming pool, summer programs, adult softball grounds and parks. Spent about 700, or excuse me, $574,000, down about $45,000 from the prior year. Most of that decrease was to the pool, was down about $25,000, adult softball was down, and then park and rec was also down. The next slide just breaks down the different park and rec expenditures a little bit more. So we have revenues, direct revenues coming in for the park in the blue, and then the pool in the blue, and then operating expenditures in the red. So the park, there wasn't a whole lot of opportunities with the revenue coming in due to social distancing guidelines. So revenues are down about $11,000 in the park related to charges for service. Repairs are also down in the park. Park spent about $296,000 in operating costs. Second grouping there is the pool, so total revenues of $124,000, down about $70,000 from the prior year. And then total cost for running the pool, about $200,000, so that was also down related to salaries and supplies. And then adult softball that you did not run, there are some costs that were caught up in 2020. Next slide is economic development. So this was, this is the revolving loans, TIF expenditures and professional services. So the red on the bottom is going to be the normal economic development expenditures, so about $190,000, up about $7,000 in the prior year. Spent about $84,000 on services, professional services, $21,000 on tax abatements. Then we added a new category, the blue on top, which we have unallocated, so these are going to be CARES dollars that are passed through. So just under $200,000 were spent on community business grants that are passed directly through to different businesses, and about $12,000 for the community meal program, which were both funded through the CARES programs. Governmental fund revenues, just breaking up the categories, so you can see the largest one is public safety, followed by general government this year, and recreation are actually pretty close. Going on to the general fund, the budget is actual on slide 19, so the budget in the blue color, actual expenditures in the red. So total general fund expenditures were under budget by about $106,000, so during the pandemic you guys were very aware of your costs and you actually were under budget in the general fund by about $106,000. So the main first category there is the general government, was about $86,000 over budget, but $66,000 that was related to the capital that was purchased with CARES grants, so your revenues were also over budget in that category as well. Public safety pretty much on budget, a little bit over, under budget, and public works about $146,000, and under in the recreation, about $62,000. So total general fund revenues were also under budget, so you did about $66,000 better than budget in the general fund than planning. So you added about $150,000 to your general fund. So that's at year end. The other funds that do have budgets are, the first one there is the revolving loan fund, still under budget, volunteer fire, a little bit over budget due to supplies and clothing, and then far right economic development was over budget as well, $218,000 and $211,000 of that is related to CARES expenditures. Every one thing else was pretty close to budget there. General fund reserves on slide 22. So one way that people judge the health of the general fund reserves is do you take your total unassigned and committed fund balance and divide it by your total expenditures? So your committed and unassigned are in the gold color, and your total expenditures are in the blue. So we did add about the $150,000 to our fund balance in the gold color, so that's just over 1.8 million. Our expenditures at the 2.5 million, so you get about 73%, so pretty consistent from 2019 to 2020, especially with those higher costs in the general fund related to the CARES. Next is the library fund balance. So property taxes, revenues of $291,000 came into the library fund. The top gold color is going to be the two donations from the BRIN and the HALEC trust that are restricted. And then the total fund balance was about $266,000 in the libraries, so the healthy fund balance in the library. Civic center fund balance has about $56,000 set aside, up about $2,000 from the prior year, funded through property taxes, about $63,000, and then charges for services, so any rentals was a little over $2,700, that was down a little bit from the prior year. First responders and fire fund on slide 25. So the fund balance did decrease about $33,000 in 2020 due to additional purchase of operating supplies, gloves, face masks and other needed for the, to respond to the pandemic. So we have about $38,000 set aside for the fire first responder fund balance. There's no equipment debt outstanding at this time. Back in 2017 is when you transferred about $240,000 to the fire capital fund, so that is what that decrease was back in 2017. Revolving loan fund has outstanding loans of about $144,000. There's one new loan for about $15,000 for the cabinet coffee issued in 2020, and there's about $301,000 available in cash for future loans under the revolving loan fund balance. Economic development, so about $195,000 set aside for future economic development. Property tax taxes, just over $60,000. There was the donated land sale in 2020 of $100,000. So there's still funds set aside for economic development. Capital project fund, fund balance on slide 28. So they have a little over $1,464,000 set aside for future capital project needs. So we did use some of the funds, but there is no new debt issued in 2020 to fund the street projects, so you use reserves to use, to fund that project. And then also in 2019, there are some unspent bond proceeds, and that was also a high just due to the timing of one of those projects to actually. Next, we look at your debt service. So your special assessment bond on slide 30. So far right column, 2020, this is the lowest in the 10 years that's presented a debt outstanding for the city. So that is closer to, back to 2015 before we issued the big bond. So there is only currently three special assessment bonds outstanding. The 2016 improvement bonds paid off in 2026, 2017 is paid off in 2027, 2019 is paid off in 2030. So the city did make early payments on the 2010 A, 2011 A, 2013 B to 2012 A, as you had reserves collected, so you did make early payments on those bonds in 2020. General obligation bonds, so this is going to be the swimming pool, and the first one in the fire station bonds, both are paid, all payments were being made timely. The swimming pool's paid off in 2026, and the fire station's paid off in 2033. We also have general obligation utility bonds, so either may be water and sewer, there are a portion of any of the bonds. So the 2016 A is split between the special assessment sewer and water, was paid off in 2025, and then the 2019 A sewer and water portion did not make any principal payments as the first payments will be made in 2021. And then on slide 33 is the nursing home assisted living bond, has about $875,000 left in. Five-year debt service requirement, so that rose flat as I've seen on any of my cities, is just over $1 million the next five years with no new debt being paid. So before those pre-main payments were made, you was closer to the 1.2 million for the next five years if we look back at last year, so you guys did save some money by paying those bonds off and saving those interest dollars. Next is the net pensioned liability. So this is the city that, since the city employees participate in PARA, which is a multi-employer pension plan, is, the new standard came out in 2015 that said anybody that participates in PARA has to record their share of their liability of that underfunded multi-employer pension plan. It's not a liability that you can go and pay off, it's not a real liability. There it is a real liability, but it's recorded on their books, actuary determined, we adjust to what the actuary says your percentage is based on contributions paid in. The next slide is the net pension asset, so this is the opposite way with the fire relief. They are actually overfunded by about $655,000, so the city, their government line financial statement actually has an asset recorded, a little bit to the fire pension asset. Next, we'll look at the enterprise fund. So the first one there on slide 38 is the water fund. So we have the revenues in the green, operating expenses in the red, non-operating income in the purple, and then net income before transfers. So revenues were up almost $14,000 or a little over 1.5% in 2020. There was a small rate increase in 2020 as well, and then the operating expenses were up about $44,000 in 2020 as there was some well maintenance and pump maintenance, a little 1 and 2 done in 2020. So about $480,000 of net income before the payment in lieu of taxes, the $40,000 that goes back out to the general fund. So after the payment in lieu, we added about $360,000 in net position in the water fund. Slide 39 there shows the cash position in the green and any bonds in the red. So cash is up about $390,000 from 2019 to 2020. We have a little over 3.6 million in cash in the water fund, bonds outstanding just over $550,000 as of year end. So cash from 2011 to 2020 has increased over $2.5 million as you are adding reserves and being able to fund projects with the water. Sewer fund, these other revenues are in the green, next column is operating expenses in the orange, and then income in the blue on the far right. So there was a small rate increase in the sewer fund as well, because revenues are up about $21,000. Sewer expenses were relatively flat, being up $9,000, so they added about $317,000 to the net position before the payment in lieu. So added about $277,000 reserves in the sewer fund, and then the sewer fund cash in the blue, and bonds payable in the red. So the cash is a little over 1.4 million as of year end, up about $245,000 from the prior year.
As about $926,000 outstanding.
And then the stormwater fund has cash of about $790,000. There is no change in rate, it's been a steady incline in cash since 2012, it's a steady trend. So future cash there for futures, stormwater and sewer pond needs related to that. Then just a brief summary there, the general fund unsigned committed fund balance of 1.8 million represents about 73% of the total expenditure, general fund expenditures in 2020. The general fund tax levy generated about 55% of the total revenue, while 16% was related to local government aid or LGA of the governmental revenue. Fire department has reserves of just under $39,000. This is exclusive of the capital project fund that has a separate fire capital equipment of about $342,000 set aside. Revolving loan funds have loans outstanding of $144,000 and $300,000 in cash. City capital project funds have about $1.4 million in reserves, including the fire capital. Total debt decreased about 6.5 million, and then the water sewer and stormwater are all generating sufficient cash flow to fund capital needs, service debt and build reserves. And then the city did a very good job of maintaining accurate records of all the city funds and provided supportive documentation for all the transactions that we tested during our audit. I know I went through a lot of numbers pretty quickly, any questions on anything?
Anyone in council, any questions around here? I'd like to, once again, thanks, Ms. Shafer, for an outstanding job of working with the city, and we appreciate it. We appreciate all you've done over the last year and a half, two years. We'd also like to send our thanks out to our finance director, to our finance committee, all the staff for keeping the reins in on stuff. We did a fantastic job last year with the tough times we went through. We appreciate all the great work you did around here. Anybody else up here ready? No?
We'll just second that. Whenever we've had the calls, the reliability of a prompt response continues from Smith Shafer, so on behalf of our staff, we're very appreciative for that, so.
All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew.
You can leave if you'd like or stay.
See you later.
See ya. Don't it make you.
Bye, Andrew. Next, they'll take us under Marvin Development Tax Abatement Request. Marvin Development Three LLC has requested the city of Sturville consider the use of tax abatement for costs associated with necessary site improvements for a new two thousand eight hundred sixty-seven square foot Taco Bell quick service restaurant to be located on parcel ID number five four two seven two one zero seven two six nine six, which is at one hundred Schuman Drive Northwest, Sturville. They show on attached map, Marvin Development LLC is requesting an abatement that would rebate ninety percent of new, new city taxes generated by the development over ten years or up to seventy thousand. This abatement would be structured as pay-as-you-go incentive. Staff is recommending that council authorize the presentation of the abatement plan by working with David Downe, associate public finance advisors at TAF, Stetness and Holster LLC for the aforementioned project. Staff were informed that the estimated cost for these services will be up to six thousand. Marvin Development LLC has agreed to reimburse the city for all these expenses. Also, in accordance with Minnesota abatement law, staff is further recommending that a public hearing be held at seven P.M. on Tuesday, June ninth, or excuse me, June eighth, thank you, Brent, twenty-twenty-one, for the purpose of evaluating this abatement request. That's Tuesday, June eighth at seven. All right, actually, question, after we have some discussion if we have any, is to authorize proposed preparation of the abatement plan for Marvin Development Three LLC. And motion two will be called for a public hearing at seven P.M. on Tuesday, June eighth, twenty-twenty-one at Sturville City Hall to evaluate the use of tax abatement for the project described above. Now, any questions from the council? Joy will have the answers as many as she can.
And the EDA did provide a formal recommendation at their meeting just before yours tonight.
Just prior, we had an EDA and we recommended it. This is, a bunch of this will go to helping them build that new retention pond, which will also help in the future for our other site that we have for sale out there yet. So it's going to be good to good use. Plus, it's bringing Dr. Miller.
I'm excited.
I'll make a motion to move forward at both steps to prepare the abatement plan and to call for the public hearing. I need two motions, two separates.
Make him to melt it until heavy melt.
Okay. We've got a motion to move forward on one and a motion to have the hearing on two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We want a second on both of them? We have a second for both of them. Is there any other questions or discussion? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They both carry. There he is. Joy, you can stay or leave too if you don't.
I'll stay.
Next item will be a variance request. Come on. Inglebrook variance request. Jeff Inglebrook, four oh five East First Street, applied for a two-foot variance from the required three-foot side yard requirement per section one-three-three-zero-point-zero-five development requirements. If approved, he will build a thirty-by-twenty-six, which is seven hundred and eighty square feet, detached garage. The reason for request is to line the garage up with the house on the side yard. The planning commission held a public hearing on May fourth and is recommending approval of the variance. Everything was good to you?
Yeah, the neighbor was there and the neighbor's fine with it.
Neighbor's fine with it, all right. So council actually requested will be approved, the variance requested, variance request as requested. Do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will carry. Next item, twenty-twenty-one, J.D. Moore. As per the approved twenty-twenty-one capital equipment plan and the twenty-twenty-one budget, this item is scheduled for replacement in the next couple of years. We are moving it up due to mechanical issues and availability of parts. We were able to adjust other items to stay within our planned capital budget for twenty-twenty-one. The cost of the replacement of this wide area mower has been estimated at sixty thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents. This matches the state bid. We will be purchasing through our local dealership, Bodine's Power Equipment. Council actually requested to be to approve or deny the purchase of an eleven-foot John Beer mower. Questions or concerns?
I'm making a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question for Sean. The mower that's broke down and you can't get parts for, are we, are you gonna keep it for backup once you get parts for?
We are, it is usable, but it cuts out and dies down, and then they end up sitting out there for a while till it pops back out. It's the computer control part is what the issue is. Though they're out, they can't get out. So we are going to live it along as long as we can. And then the intentions are, instead of running one big, the one we have now is a Jacobson sixteen foot. The closest thing you can get in anything wider than that big is the city's. We just spent five hundred dollars to have them come down here and look at it and tell us, yep, it's what it is. So I, we talked about getting two eleven footers to replace that sixteen footer. The cost would be, it's a hundred thousand off the state bid for the sixteen footers, and it is a hundred and eighteen thousand something to get two eleven footers, which we're adding ten acres of parts this year alone. So that gives us a little more flexibility, plus it keeps us local with the service and whatnot. And that was discussed with the mayor, the guys at the shop. Everyone talked about it, had their input. That's the route they kind of wanted to go. They thought it would benefit us when it comes to hiring summer help now, instead of having two on the small mowers, we'll have, and then one on the big mower. We will have two on bigger mowers and one do the trimming because these smaller mowers will get in and around other areas a little bit better. So that's the intention. When we get the parts, when we can get the parts for this one, we will replace that part and we will sell that either in public surplus or something like that. Put that money towards the second eleven footer.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries it. There, that takes us to mayor staff consult reports. On the mayor's report tonight, we have, we'd like to send our sympathies to the families of Sandy Jordan, Evelyn Cunuson, Conrad Fingerson, David Beerly, and Florence Jensen. And we'll send the happy sixtieth birthday to one of our own employees right here, Laurel. She's not here tonight, but as we can see, it's been a celebration today, it looks like. She made that milestone of sixty. So happy birthday, Laurel. Don't forget, it's time to finish up the spring cleaning. We had the rummy sales. If you got anything left, we start loading up for the citywide cleanup, which is May fifteenth and nineteenth. Neighbors helping neighbors provide assistance with spring cleanup for older adults and persons with disabilities. If you need or know someone who could use this help, either cleaning or mowing lawns or things like that, make the call to two eight seven two zero one zero. Storm will be back in Sturville for one day only on July seventeenth. Service to others and relational ministry sponsored by United Methodist Church will come out to your place, do whatever you need. The garage cleaning, washing windows, replacing furnace filters, cleaning ceiling lights, they do just about anything. These kids are looking for work. Contact, contact Renee Wilson, two six one five four one three to schedule the help. Don't be shy, and you better start calling now because they'll get lined up and get a lot of stuff for you to do. Teen Gospel Choir will sign, will sign this Sunday at Grace Free Church. Sing this Sunday at Grace Free Church. Two concerts, four P.M. and seven P.M. They'll be a good one to listen to. And don't forget to join the Sturville Historical Society Facebook page. I've been looking at that. It's got a lot of neat stuff on it. Been a huge hit so far. There's a lot of fun history shared. If you have some, you can share it on there. May twenty-second will be the amphitheater grand opening. Music, beanbag tournaments, kids' activities. What did you just send out, forty-two-hundred postcards? May twenty-third will be community appreciation event from twelve to four for Logan. It's Logan Strum, community appreciation. There's gonna be a beanbag tournament there. There'll be kids' activities, foods, drawings, raffles, silent auctions. Logan's white little guy, he's kind of, kind of facing the community right now. So if you get the opportunity, let's get out there at the American Legion from twelve to four on May twenty-third, help the little guy out. That's all I have got right now. So we'll send it over to the city administrator's report, Bill.
All righty, reports in your packet. The first item I highlighted, Andrew didn't get much, but he has a touch on it, but we did get the electronic notification for our two thousand nineteen financial word. So once we get the plaque info or the pin over there, I will present that to you for the public's benefit. Then really, the only other item I got, or two items I got, the preliminary word Carl and I are getting from these federal dollars is, because it came up at our last meeting, it looks like broadband, a good share of its cost should get covered. So that'll help us solid with some of those fee costs we were talking about last time. And then the last item, I just sent it out this afternoon because we just received it this past week here, but last several years, our services for law enforcement have remained steady, costs have been reasonable, just inflationary type adjustments. Well, this proposal that came in is quite substantial and a proposed increase. And so I did notify the sheriff's office that it's probably gonna warrant some type of work session with them so we can discuss services we want to keep, if we want to change, if we do, if there's revisions. Our coverage is made up of two different contracts, and so I did include those for you. When you get a chance, you can start rolling through that and then just start thinking about dates. We'll try to, sure, I'll try to do some polling with you and come up with a workshop session with them, and then we can talk about the future there.
Send out some thank yous to some of the community foundation and the beaches and Simmons and S.E.H. and other event contributors for the grand opening. You want to do something?
Yeah, we'll try to. That squared away, we wanted to give them public recognition at your meeting, and then we'll do the formal thank yous because they really, between S.E.H. and the Beach family and the community foundation, really got the kickstart going, and we had some of our staff help with several health things throughout. And then obviously, public works is helping with in-kind things as we continue on. So it's gonna be a great kickoff and it should be a great summer showing off the amphitheater and Bear Cave Park.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the city administrator? All right, thank you, Bill. Carl, finance director's report?
We obviously finished the twenty-twenty budget, or audit, and we are going to start working on getting the GF O.A. award for the, for that audit that we just finished, and I will work with Mr. Schaefer on that to get everything combined and finished.
Anything else?
No.
Anything for finance director, Carl? All right, thank you, Carl. Public Works Director, Sean?
One of those reported there. I know Jenna's not here today, so I'll just touch real quick on some of those C.I.P. project, how things are going. They're getting a lot of the cement placed on last year's phase, phase one of the project, and it's really shapes up and looks nice after they start getting those finishing touches in there. The, a lot of the homeowners are in the process of switching over their power at their house so that the poles can count. And I know there's three electricians that have majority of the work in there, all done and working out. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, we can get those poles yanked out and get the sidewalks completely finished in that area. Phase two, this year's area that they're working on with utilities, they're moving along really well. The weather obviously expects a spring like this with the dry weather. So they're actually ahead of schedule for what they're anticipating, and things are going really well there. We're gonna be subcut Third Street, Third Avenue down to Second Street, Second Street down to Lake Shore, towards Lake Shore there. Should be subcut and replac, placed back by the end of next week. So they'll almost be halfway through already.
Sean, I have a question for you. When you're burning out at the dump, is there anybody you can put a sign out there that says burning or burning in progress so they don't, nobody calls fire department or is that not a network?
We call it notify dispatch generally when we do it. That one had jumped, the wind picked up that day and jumped into it. Yeah, I mean.
And it's one where we had a complaint office that one.
Oh, yeah, we were just, someone just brought it up. I was curious if the.
And we are moving, we are moving the burn piles further to the north and deepening them further north so they're not next to the leaf piles. I mean, when they, they lit that day, it was perfect conditions, and then the wind picked up a lot, left a pole that morning, and it, you know, it jumped in because it was windy when it picked up.
Yeah, and it actually worked out really well. So I actually called Sean, just on the phone real quick, told him there was no hazard, immediate hazard out there, so he got one of the guys out there to be careful.
Just went up with a loader, so it didn't.
So we didn't create a bigger hazard.
And I appreciate Vance's efforts, and then Bill even went out and checked for me too. I was tied up doing stuff, and Bill went and checked for me also and let me know, and one of the guys just took the loader out there and just separated it so that it couldn't jump across.
I'm the fire chief, Bill.
All of those red.
Yeah, one of my office.
Any other questions for Sean? Thanks, Sean, totally nice, thanks. Neil, city engineer report tonight, the library director, that takes us to the fire chief's background.
All right, last month, we were a little busy. We had thirty-seven EMS calls, three of those were cardiac related, twelve fire calls, which included a gas leak, three outside trash fires, two grass fires, four vehicle accidents, and then two public service calls. So our call volume is definitely going back up a little bit. Just so the council's aware of it, Mayo Clinic has a child car seat clinic that they, that they provide through the city of Rochester. They train people, volunteers, to do the seat clinics, but with the pandemic, they haven't been able to do that for about the last year and a half. They reached out to Sturville Fire Department, I had worked with Bill. We opened up the fire hall for that training, so they had a three-day training for volunteers to do that seat clinic, and then they conducted two seat clinics last month here, to allow new parents to come, bring their cars through, make sure the seats are installed correctly. So it's a great use of the fire hall, no interruption to any city business, but really was a public safety focus for the fire hall. Rochester still hasn't opened up yet, so they've requested come back in June, like June twenty-second. So we will open the hall up again for them on June twenty-second so they can continue to do that. They may actually alternate between Sturville and Rochester because they say there's a lot of people down this part of the county that they think they can help, just give you a little bit different down here. So it's a different use of the hall that we haven't used, used it for in the past. I think it's consistent with what you've asked us to do is maintain public safety in there, and Bill, Bill will help us make that, make that work real good. With that, we have, we talked probably about four months ago about an auto aid agreement with the Rochester Fire Department. That aid agreement is in effect with Dover Yoda, Elgin, Byron, and now Sturville. It all went live at the same time. It is only related to auto vehicle accidents and structure fires. So there's a little bit of a distance that we will go into Rochester to help them out. Most likely, they will cut us loose relatively quickly because they have a lot of assets. They will come into our district a little bit also. More often than not, we'll cut them loose. But it's really the ability to build that relationship better with that fire department so that when we do get a point where we're short or they're short, we can work, work well together. I don't see it being a very large impact on the city of Sturville. We'll monitor that, kind of keep an eye out, let them know how that's going along the way. So a couple of things that we've got going on is on Stewart Cruisers on May twenty-eighth, it's having a senior parade. They're gonna have, much like they did last year, we will have a couple of apparatus in there at their request in the parade, just to kind of be the Stewart Cruisers and the seniors from this year around town. We've discussed the Bear Cave Summer Concert Series. We will, we're looking to have an EMS support out there. I have a feeling, at least our anticipation, is it's probably going to be a pretty big event with everything opening back up. People from Rochester, I'm assuming, will have pretty good sized crowds out there. We'd just like to have some medical units out there in case something would happen, so we're at least ready for it. And we're gonna have people out there listening to concerts anyway, so we'll, we'll have some medical capability out there during those concerts. And we're just starting to talk about the July fourth events, really about the Bear Cave concert for the evening concert that we have every year that's going to be performed out there. Make sure we staff that appropriately, fireworks, and how we'll kind of integrate and do fire department stuff out there, great paper, work with Sean and the chamber on that, and see what we can do to continue our participation with that. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? You did a good job, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take us committee commission board reports, chamber congress. Well, you got it.
Just looking forward to a normal summer fest.
There you go. We all are. EDA, HRA, we met tonight, and just saying before this, recommended the tax abatement to the council. Bill, yeah? Finance?
We had a meeting last week. That's right.
All right, library?
Nothing.
We met last night. Craig would have enjoyed it, we met for two hours. We had a presentation for an Eagle Scout project. We're actually gonna hear about that next meeting, if I'm remembering. And...
I'm gonna send through two hours of presentation.
No. No. That was, yeah, it should be pretty straightforward. And so some, just some other projects that we're planning on for some improvements out to Bear Cave, and in like an estimate for to complete the loop around the trail out here. There's some things of that nature.
So you had a good meeting?
We had a good meeting.
Good. Any questions for J.R.I.? Bill's got one. Fire chief, Bill.
Just that, Elkar's doing some trail replacement work, so you might see a little gravel section or the remodel section for a while, but they'll be back in to pave that.
They reclaimed it yesterday. It's tore up from the softball field at Meadow Park, the first one as you go down in there, all the way to over to Seventh Street, it's tore up, and they'll be back within two to three weeks to redo the surface of it.
Is that, is that what they're gonna do, the Dairy Queen one too?
Yep, they're hoping to do that all together.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, J.R.I. Person now?
Nothing.
Nothing right now, plans owning?
We met last week, and one item was in the agenda tonight.
Anything coming up?
Yes.
So we like to hear. Public safety. Jason's not here, does anybody have anything for public safety? We got the April calls for service in our packet. All right, public works?
Nothing.
Ready?
Shouldn't really be anything. You will be working on that strategic plan.
The strategic plan was ready, so that was in PDA this month, but they're just trying to take a bigger emphasis on the neighborhood area.
All right, thank you. ROCOG?
Their last meeting was postponed, so they're planning on meeting at the end of this month.
All right, Stu, 180?
No updates.
Transit advisory committee?
Yep, notification in your packet, they're willing to give free rides to citizens. Just dial them up, and they'll get them off to a vaccine...
For a vaccine, for your COVID vaccine, for your rides.
Bring that.
No communications in the packet this time, no one here broke the mic, so motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?